Testing, testing. Good evening, everybody. Our March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three meeting is now called to order. I want, before we proceed, I ask you please take a moment to silence your cell phones during the meeting. The City Council encourages public participation. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. And of course, we have the clock on the wall to indicate that time. However, this time limit may be reduced if there are numerous speakers on a particular item. To ensure efficient proceedings, all persons addressing the City Council shall state their names and shall speak in a civil and courteous manner. Speakers shall address the agenda topic only to which they are speaking on and shall not be repetitive. Members of the audience, please respect the rights of others and not create noise or other disturbances as to disrupt or disturb persons who are, who are addressing the City Council, council members who are speaking, or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the meeting. All right, we'll have prayer by yours truly, and then pledge led by Councilman Harrington. May we stand for prayer and pledge? Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for this day, which affords us another chance to not only do some things better, but also to live our lives in a more excellent way. And we come today striving for a better city, and I thank you, God, for guiding us, myself, the City Council, even the residents, and anybody else who would speak. Bless everybody who's on the agenda tonight. Let them speak clearly and succinctly. And Lord God, I pray that we would handle the business of this fine city in a way that brings you glory, in a way that is decently and in order. In your son's name we ask, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Councilman Harrington, for that. We're now to the reading and approval of the minutes from our March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
Mayor, make a motion that we dispense with the reading of the minutes of March thirteenth, and that they be approved as printed, no corrections.
Second. All right, motion been made and seconded to adopt the minutes as they have been printed. Comments or questions, Council, about this particular motion? Public comments about this particular motion? Okay, Mrs. Stacy, CNN, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next on the agenda is a proclamation read by Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation, whereas March signifies a national celebration of the importance of food and agriculture in the United States, as it provides almost everything we eat and use each day, and allows for an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the diversity and abundance provided by Nakadish's farms and our growing food and agriculture sector. Whereas Nakadish, nearly six hundred and twenty-seven farms, with an average of three hundred and forty acres per farm, provide consumers with food and fiber from nearly two hundred and fourteen thousand acres of farmland, helping to make the food and agriculture industry, one of our parishes, critical economic drivers, contributing thirty-six million annually to our state's economy. Whereas members of the Nakadish food and agriculture sector from farms, processing facilities, grocery stores, and restaurants, to those who inspect these facilities to ensure a safe and abundant food, have served as essential workers throughout the COVID-nineteen pandemic, keeping us fed and healthy. And whereas Nakadish, integrated network of family farmers, nine hundred and sixty-six producers, processors, wholesalers, retailers, and consumers work to ensure a safe and nutritious food supply enjoyed by thousands throughout our city and parish. And whereas Nakadish's agriculture and food sector continues to grow, offering new business and career opportunities. Now, therefore, I, Mayor, Mayor Ronnie Williams, Jr., of the City of Nakadish, hereby proclaim that March is designated as Agriculture Month in the City of Nakadish, and I call upon all citizens to join me in recognizing and reaffirming our commitment to and appreciation for our local farmers, farmworkers, ranchers, fishers, foresters, and all those who work in the agriculture sector across the nation. And I move that we adopt this proclamation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. I think that this is a worthy, one of those worthy proclamations. To be sure, none of us would be where we are today, really, without agriculture. And I say that this is something that's thousands of years old, but with the onset development of agriculture, it allowed for specialization of other careers, other jobs. And prior to that, of course, it was certainly a much more maybe dangerous and laborious way to get food. Not saying that agricultural, agriculture is easy now, was easy when it first started, but, but really, one of the most significant human innovations that, that we can speak of. So again, it allows everybody to, because if you had to get your food, you wouldn't be doing your career that you're doing now, right? So, but we do have people who are doing that, and we certainly appreciate them through this proclamation, declaring this month Agriculture Month in the City of Nakadish. We do have a couple guests, young guests here today, and they don't have a speech necessarily, but we do know that they've been asked to at least introduce themselves. So, wanting to come at this particular moment, and then we're going to honor them with the proclamation, get a quick picture with them as well. So, again, state your first and last name, and what you're connected to as well. Introduce yourself, I'm sorry.
I am the Nakadish Farm Bureau Queen, and I'm Madala Mitchell.
I'm Tatum Roberts, and I'm a volunteer for Farm Bureau Federation and a active 4-H member.
Yep, and I think both are involved in 4-H, both high school students.
Yes.
Right, what grade?
Tenth.
Tenth grade?
Eleventh.
Tenth and eleventh, okay. So, involved in 4-H, I think, Council, I don't know if you were involved in 4-H growing up, but for a short time in my elementary schooling, I was part of 4-H, and my mother all through junior high, high school. So, really one of those important programs. Council, I don't know if you have anything before we put it to a vote? Any question, comment, or? We really appreciate, appreciate y'all coming and being with us tonight, and happy that you're going to accept this proclamation, but we got to make sure it gets passed first, so. Any comments, questions about the proclamation, Council? Any public comments or questions about the proclamation? Okay, Mrs. Stacy, CNN, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. You two just come here and get a picture with him. All right. Next item on the agenda is a planning and zoning item for final, also read by Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number seventeen of two thousand twenty-three, and ordinance, amending ordinance number sixty-four of two thousand one by changing zoning classification of property described as follows. Lots one and two of northeast corner of Texas Street and Fourth Street, three twelve Texas is the physical address. Whereas the Planning Commission of the City of Nakadish, State of Louisiana, has recommended at their March seventh, two thousand twenty-three meeting, that the application of Gray Lou Ventures LLC to rezone the property described above from B-two commercial to B-three with additional BA zoning to operate a cigar lounge restaurant with alcohol consumption on premises be approved. The ordinance was introduced on March thirteenth and published in the Nakadish Times on March eighteenth. And I move to adopt ordinance number seventeen of two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
All right, motion been made and seconded to adopt this zoning change, all right? And we, I think we've had some information before on this particular business through a couple processes that we've already gone through. We do, we have the before picture, and of course, we see the transformation. The before picture on the bottom left, and then the transformation that's going on, which looks really spectacular from the outside, also from the inside as well. See that on the bottom right, okay? We have Mr. Mark Lewis. He's spoken before. I don't know if there's a need, really, at this point to say anything. But again, this is a, just a part of applying for alcohol license, okay? Council, got any comments or questions? Any public comments or questions here? Yes, sir. Steve, you got us?
Carl CS. Um, I'm not totally against anybody open up a business in Nakadish at all. I'm totally against unfairness. When I asked you all about this business, way back then, nobody knew anything about it and everything else. And I heard you just say, Mayor, that we've been talking about it and everything else. To put this in the historical district, was it was done just to get a alcohol license in this particular area for this particular business? And you ran the business, the district, all the way down to Brita Avenue, and you shut it off. I think that it's unfair to the other people on Texas Street that own business and everything else, not can apply for the same idea. And why was it shut off? And my idea is, for as the, some of the council member misleading, misled, Mayor, you misled a bunch of people, because when I asked about it, you all didn't know anything about it. Matter of fact, the city lawyer told me he gonna look into it and get back with me, and nobody did. Oh, nobody said anything else about it. And like I say, I'm not against anybody open up a business anywhere in this town here, but it's all about the fairness of other people in this town also. And I know Texas Street is a zone for cooking and everything else. And actuality, if we could have went back to the days of the ap yard, right there on Home Street, and reopen that back up for people, did the same thing. It's not a fair deal that everybody that work in city government get what they want. And you've got people that trying to reach that milestone, can't reach it simple because of the fact that we play political games in the arena and everything else. And y'all don't have to answer me, because I already know the answer. This was a zone to put in by the historical district for a liquor license. I, I mean, I don't care, but just be fair with everybody on Texas Street. You've got some other places up there planning to open up a business and everything else. Will they be allowed to do the same thing?
Thanks for your comment. And I think just a part of that, I'll say, I think one thing we said at the last meeting that we would continue to consider other areas as well, that was stated. And that's, that's going to happen, all right? Any other public comment about this item?
Hello, my name is Precious Barbara. I just have one question. Who are the owners of this building?
Mr. Mark Lewis is here.
Who is Mark Lewis? Okay.
And Ms. Nicole Gray.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments or questions? Council?
I have a question for, for Ms. Rock. I know this was brought up before, because normally, if it's rezoning something like to B-three, a far less restrictive zone, it's put in there that it will automatically revert back if the business ever ceases operation or some, something to that effect. Is that correct? Am I right on that?
Well, we already have an ordinance that states that if a business ceases to exist within six months, that it automatically reverts back.
So, anytime it ceases to exist after six months, it reverts back, or is that what you're saying?
Yes, it automatically will. If the building closes, the off, I mean, the business closes the door, its doors within six months, it reverts back to a B-two.
Okay, yeah, then that covers what I was.
Okay.
Thanks for looking into it.
And I just want to say, in fairness to other bus, business owners on Texas Street, prior to this, after learning of it, I did talk with some business owners on Texas Street, and also consulted with attorney and I think Randy LaCass to find out if other businesses would also be allowed, as the gentleman who came to the podium stated, would also be allowed to serve alcohol or, you know, operate their business in that manner also. And I was told that they would, and that it would also cover both sides of Texas Street, not just one side. So, I wanted to make sure that, you know, all business owners would be treated fairly prior to voting for this. So hopefully, we can eventually, I know it ends at Brita Avenue in the future. As our attorney, city attorney said, we can take it further down Texas Street in order to allow other business owners to take advantage of the, you know, the tax credits allotted for being in, in the historic district.
And I will say that there's another business that's already indicated that they're going to apply. I think he came to one of the other meetings, Mr. Gilli. So, I don't know if they started the process yet, but they're going to apply as well.
And we've discussed that, some of us on the council, and Ms. Betty, that we, we would like to see it extend all the way down Texas, to give all the businesses, all the benefits of it.
Yep.
And that's, that's ultimately, I think, the ultimate goal, and, and other areas too, that we'd like to see it extended.
Right. I'm, I'm sorry, we already had you for three minutes on this. No, no, I'm not, I'm talking to him, yeah. Mr. Attorney, he's already had his three minutes, so.
If it's a different, different issue.
Different issue.
It's the same agenda item, though.
Same agenda, I mean, if he has something based on what they said, I think he can.
Okay, if there's something based on what they, what was just stated.
Freedom of speech.
What, Carl CS, what is the, you say in the future, the near future? How long would this actually be allowed for them to be notified and get into this, and go ahead and get this done, and make this whole street the historical district, where everybody be treated fairly? And I'm just saying, is it a cutoff point, or what?
No, it's, it's not a cutoff point. Extending the historical district, I mean, based on what the council and the mayor recommend, it'd come back just like this matter came up.
So do they, okay?
So, they have put legislation on the agenda. You have a public hearing, which allows the community, yourself, and anyone to make comments before the council. But at any point they decide to bring it on, they have the power and authority to do that.
Okay, so when will the council be able to get this approved?
It could be as early as next meeting, it could be whenever, yeah, whenever the council decides exactly what areas.
Okay, well, y'all go ahead, because I'm gonna try to get everybody on board for everybody be treated equal, and, and they can open up whatever they want to open up and anything else.
And that's something I want to see, Mr. Carl, I really do, so we will be working on that.
Thank you.
So, we will be.
Okay. Okay, Council, any other comments, questions?
I had a question, Precious Barbara. I'm not sure when, I think the man was from Northwestern, I'm just trying to get understanding. When you become part of the historic district?
Dr. Horton.
Yeah, I think he said, I, I'm not sure if I heard the right thing, but I heard him say something, if I heard the right thing, if they can afford it. So I'm wondering, if you become a part of the historic district, is it extra amount of monies that you have to pay to become a historic district if you're a business or something? I'm not knowing what it is.
It's hard to know, answer that question, without Dr. Horton being here exactly, but.
You don't pay a fee to be in it? There are, depending on, on where, where your building that you own in the historic district is located, there could be some, like if you're trying to update your building and you're wanting to paint it, then they sometimes, and this really only comes into play with some of the houses down here, like let's say the, the Prudential House, it's built in the late seventeen hundreds. Well, they have to fit in historic with their painting, what they're gonna do with painting, with the windows. They have to fit that time period.
Right.
So, for that building, it's very expensive to fit that time.
Because I know I heard him say, if you can't afford it. So, it, it will not affect, even though it's a business, none of the people, say, for instance, you might have a house, like say, for instance, when y'all extend historic, if y'all was to extend the historic district down Texas Street, you have some homes that people are living in. So will it affect citizens, or it's just gonna affect business owners?
It will probably affect homes also. My understanding of it, one thing I did not want to do, I did not want to create a burden. As we know, majority, let's just be open about it, majority blacks in that area.
Right.
And so I did not want to create a hardship on people being forced to keep up. Because being in historic district, there's certain restrictions that's applied. And I did, did not want to place a hardship on people in that district who ma, making them have to apply with those particular ordinances or requirements. But listening to Dr. Horton, he said that they would not have to have, you know, specific color, paint, and that type stuff. That was one of the reasons why I went along with it, because listening to him from what he explained, so it's on record, Mr. Horton, if this comes back again, that they would not have to apply to specific color and, you know, windows and that type stuff, they could keep it.
Okay, because I know when he was talking, I heard him say something like, if they can't afford it. So when he said can't afford it, I was like, because most of them people in poverty that live over there, I was just trying to make sure with nothing go up for them. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Council, don't know if there's anything else? All right, CNN, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda, we have some ordinances for final, and next up is Councilman PT.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number zero-one-eight of two thousand and twenty-three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Nakadish, Louisiana, to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with Kane River National Heritage Area, whereby the City of Nakadish will provide employees to the Kane River National Heritage Area in exchange for the services and benefits that the city receives from the operations of the Kane River National Heritage Area. And I so moved that ordinance number zero-one-eight be adopted.
Second. Okay, Rebecca was here at the last minute, she's not able to be here today. But as I referenced on the thirteenth, that this is an agreement that's been around for more than a decade. It has a list, just like with the following, CEA has a list of benefits that are offered to the city. And Council, I'm sure you've read them already. So, nothing new about this agreement. I think we see the benefit that Kane River National Heritage Area provides to the city. And so, I don't know if there's any comment that you all have about this CEA that's come in before us again.
And it's not a cost to the city?
Right.
No.
Right. And specifically for this fee, well, there's a fee associated with this service, I guess I should, should say that. So it's not, good point, Councilman Harrington? All right, any public comments or questions here? Okay, CNN, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes. All right, that motion carries. This next item on the agenda is also an ordinance for final, Councilwoman at large, Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number zero-one-nine of two thousand and twenty-three is an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Nakadish, Louisiana, to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Ben Johnson Educational Center, whereby the City of Nakadish will provide employees to the Ben Johnson Educational Center in, in exchange for the services and benefits that the city receives from the operation of the Ben Josh, Ben Johnson Education Center. Whereas the, the Ben Josh, Ben Johnson Educational Center is not-for-profit corporation status with a mission to build, to build the community in the City of Nakadish and give access to social and economic success to all of the residents of the City of Nakadish. Whereas the Ben Johnson Education Center is a SNAP education training provider and offers training to SNAP recipients, providing them a portal of state assistance to workforce development, training, and has projects, projects and programs which include opportunities to gain skill, training, work, and on-the-job training. And these programs through the CEA work will increase economic development for Nakadish. And whereas the BJEC will fully reimburse the city for the actual cost of the employees assigned to the BJEC under this cooperative endeavor. And will pay an additional annual administration fee of five thousand dollars per full-time employee and two thousand dollars per part-time employees, for which administration fee will offer some of the costs to the city and establish an extra for future claims that they may, may be made by the employees assigned to the BJEC. And I move for approval and adoption of ordinance number zero-nineteen of two thousand twenty-three.
Second. All right, motion been made and seconded. This agreement is identical, except different organization to the one before with Kane River National Heritage, Heritage Area. As Councilwoman at large, Smith, read, in terms of the, what BJEC, Ben Johnson Educational Center, provides, the training, the workforce development, that's noted here in the ordinance. And as I stated, there is a list, and I'll just echo, I echo what Councilman Harrington said, no cost to the city, again, same agreement there. But there are some specific benefits that we're already seeing. And I think I could even note recently, we, well, the city played a little part in it, but a DRA grant, which I think they're gonna be successful with it. But opportunities like that, that's going to help to enhance if they are awarded that grant, the workforce development. the workforce development that's going on at the Ben Johnson Educational Center. So it's a good step, I think, for us. So I don't know, counsel, you have any comments or questions about it? Like I said, we didn't have much.
Claire is here, she wants to say something.
Well, we had her here the last time, I think she spoke.
Think they're doing a great job over there.
Hopefully, we'll continue to do so.
In one of these numbers I was reading earlier, it notes their sponge program.
Yes.
Number what? I thought I saw it recently, okay. But again, talks about their sponge program. Comments or questions, counsel? Any public comments or questions here?
Precious Barbara, my first question is, because I missed the last meeting, so I don't really know. If the city is not receiving any finances from this, how is the city benefiting from this again?
Well, we are receiving finances, no cost, I think, Councilman Harrington.
So y'all don't have to pay for anything, but you're receiving finances for this?
Yeah, so the service would be the process payment, which would benefit the employees there. What it'll do ultimately is allow for some stability and attract some really good talent, keep them here to continue to work that, work not just that program, but the many beneficial programs that are offered through the Ben Johnson Educational Center.
So the city, if I'm hearing right, the city will be providing employees for a nonprofit organization? And I'm asking this because I have never heard of this before. Maybe y'all did this when Ms. Marrow was living, I don't know nothing about it. I've been coming to these meetings ever since Mayor Wayne McCullough. And so I'm just trying to understand, are we saying that the city will be providing employees? Because I need to under, I'm just trying to understand this more than this.
Processing payroll, I think is the way to say it, not providing employees in terms of going out and finding employees.
Mayor, if you don't, if you mind?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so the way the contracts are set up, because we do have a close relationship with them and Kane River and they benefit all citizens in the area, we allow them to process their employees through our system, which enables them to have access to benefits that they would not otherwise be able to access and that gives them a higher caliber of professionals that they can acquire. So with that, they actually give us an incentive to do that for them for whatever work is put into processing those employees and the payroll. They pay us $5,000 per employee and $2,000 per part-time employee. We don't see any type of cost on the city side. We're there just to process those employees for them. They pay for all of their salaries, all of their benefits, and then they pay us to actually process them. It just enables them to have access to certain benefits. Because they're a smaller entity, the cost to provide certain benefits to their employees would be too great, you know, not feasible at all. But with them being a part of the city, they'll be able to provide those to those employees.
And so they get these monies through grants?
Well, they pay them through their, whatever sources of revenue that they have. We don't pay them at all, so we don't tell them which sources of revenue that they can use, but they have their sources. I think with the Ben D. Johnson, they do have grants and because their program runs through SNAP as well. I don't want to speak for you, Ms. Claire, but, so we don't see, we don't pay them with the city funds. They, we process them and their funds cover the salaries of those personnel.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, that was my understanding too.
Okay, great explanation, Clarissa. All right.
Carl Syas. Coming up as a boy here in Natchitoches, Ben D. Johnson Jr., great legacy to him and also to his great father. It is a privilege to have this school in our community to teach children. A lot of them can't go off to trade schools and everything else, culinary art, learn them how to cook. I have been out there and I have seen the operation myself. And whatever need to be done, I think it need to be done because of the fact that if we can instill in our children off the streets to come and get a trade and learn a trade, they can go off in life and do something good. I have been out there several times and everything else and they got some real smart people out there. I thought I was smart, but they got some people out there that is very bridge-minded people that works in there. And they, I mean, hey, I talked to a couple guys, I couldn't talk to them because it was a bit too heavy for me. But the thing of it is, when we have a good program here in our city that's giving back to the community, it's not a white-black thing, it's a thing that anybody are welcome to come to get culinary art, any type of education out there. And it's a blessing to have that in a small town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Syas. Any other public comment at this time? And counsel, I thank you. Said you were good, right? All right, seeing none, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next few ordinances are for introduction. And the first one is read by Councilman Harrington.
Ordinance number 20 of 2023 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Natchitoches to award the bid for a bucket truck for the city of Natchitoches Utility Department. And there was, one bid proposal was received and opened as follows. Versa Lift Southwest LLC out of Waco, Texas, for $192,837 even. This is for introduction only.
Okay, just for introduction, all right. This is you, Matt. Any comment you want to offer at this time?
No, not really. This is just standard bucket truck that we're replacing one of our older models. We probably won't take possession of this truck for two years. That's what they're telling us the lead time is on it. So if we put the order in now.
You say two weeks?
Two years.
Oh.
Unfortunately, yes. So we, state of the world now and the supply chain issues, we're having to think two years ahead where it used to be about six months. So two, we're planning to retire our truck in two years and replace it with this one.
Curious, I said, how many bucket trucks you typically keep on the road?
Five.
Five, okay.
So we're down.
He just think that one.
We're only down one right now. Our small bucket truck is in a shop in Alabama, actually getting some work done to it. We should have it back by the next month. So we're only down one right now. But hopefully, we won't be down any longer.
Okay. Counsel, anything else, any other thing for Matt? Again, this is just introduction. All right. Thanks, Matt, for that explanation. Next item on the agenda is read by Councilwoman and Large Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 021, 021 of 2023, is an ordinance extending the city limits of the city of Natchitoches annexing a tract situated in Section 83 Township 9 North, Range 7 West and Section 25 Township 9 North, Range 8 West, Natchitoches Parish, Louisiana. Said tract lies south of Rudy Gabriel and Louisiana Highway 6 and adjacent to the existing municipal limits of the city of Natchitoches, being a total of 174 acres, more or less, and further providing for the fixing of a public hearing, advertisement, fixing, council district for same, fixing zoning, classification, providing, and providing for an effective date of the ordinance. And this is for introduction only. Trying to see, and says, whereas the petitioners Evans Family LLC and Sibley Leg Realty Corporation of the sole owner of the promptly described above as is reflected in attached certificate from the access office. And this, as I said, this is for introduction only and maybe someone can explain.
Yeah, I think since this is related to economic development in some ways, many ways, I guess, let Randy LaCasse go ahead and give some remarks about this particular item, agenda item.
Yes, sir. I'll tell you a little bit of story, probably goes back 35 years. I'll try to limit it to three minutes. Generally, the state and DOTD started building the interchange of I-49 in the 81, 82, 83 timeframe through this part of the state. At the time this interchange opened, they first developed one Exxon service station. It was on Valley Electric Power. It had an individual sewerage system. And the city had the foresight to understand that if we didn't bring utilities out there, we could not capitalize on development of the interchange. What came forth is us going to the Evans family and trying to obtain right-of-way. And we brought utilities down a right-of-way we acquired from the bypass out to Limekill Road. And that right-of-way is now what is known as Rudy Gabriel. At the point we hit Limekill, we offset to University, which was then, I guess, LA Highway 6 West. And we went out to I-49 and the rest of that is history. You can see where it developed. They probably spent about three, three and a half million and a lot of people thought they were crazy. And they recouped the whole thing in about three years. That's how fast it paid off. All right, fast forward, the next thing that happens is Kane River Children's Home would like to build a new facility. The city took the lead and we found a $400,000 grant and developed the road into a public street from the bypass to where you turn into Kane River Children's Home. They immediately then built their facility. Fast forward to a number of years and Park Natchitoches gets developed. We need access to the rear entrance. We go to the Evans family and we propose upgrading what was just a substandard road to the rear entrance. And the Evans family agreed and paid half the cost for us to do that. Each of us put up about $75,000. As we fast forward to the current timeframe, Mayor Williams is pursuing many different avenues of grant funding, economic development administration, Delta Regional Authority, some contacts through the Corning Development Corporation, direct contacts with Washington DC through our grants consultant. And it's evident that the next step of development in that area is to extend Rudy Gabriel all the way out to I-49 and connect to Hayes Avenue, which is existing today. We find out in pursuing that, that the right-of-way has got to be in the city limits. Just that simple. I can't go out in the parish and do anything. So that's what then drove the discussions with the Evans family that we would pick an area to annex so that the proposed route would, at least in theory, be in the city limits. We chose this 174 acres. Basically, once we do this, we feel like it will be a positive contribution to us being able to look for various grants to actually develop the road. Depending on what cost you use, Nick Verret has run numbers, anywhere from two and a half to probably three and a half million. If we added service roads, which we're looking at also, it would be more like five million. And that's the background of where we are today.
Let me ask this question, because I'm really not sure where it is. Is this on, I see development over by Popeye's. Is it on that side, is it on the right-hand side as you're going out towards Highway 6?
No, it's on the Popeye's side. Hayes Avenue is the one that goes to the hotels.
Hayes or Hanes?
Hayes Avenue.
Hayes, H-A-Y-S. It goes to the hotels in the back area. That's also how our utility department gets to the water tower that's on the side of the I-49 right-of-way. And while it's a benefit that would be derived from developing the road, the access to that is definitely substandard. Sometimes of the year, it's very difficult to go back to that water tower and do maintenance work. So the whole concept would be, I could be at a hotel at I-49 and want to come to Park Natchitoches and I might never get on University. I'd take Hayes Avenue to Rudy Gabriel. I'd come down, run in parallel, maybe 600, 700 feet off of University and turn into the back gate, or I could continue on to the bypass.
Okay. Not in that traffic out there, not having hit that. It's pretty bad at certain times of the day.
And Nick, if you'd like to add anything to that, feel free to.
I think you did a good job telling the story. Councilman Nielsen, you were at a master plan meeting, I wasn't even there. But I believe there was, I don't know if you made it to that one, but there was some discussion about extending Rudy Gabriel.
That was the one right before the meeting, I want to.
Oh, okay, so you didn't attend that one, I got you.
Nope, I missed it.
Okay. But they talked about extending the importance in the master plan, which is near complete, of extending the Rudy Gabriel Road and how that would be economic benefit for the city of Natchitoches.
Can you say, just?
I'm good.
Sure. Any other comments, questions, yes, Councilman?
Mayor, this may be from Mr. Nick Verret. I know we had discussion maybe like six months ago, where we talked about the state possibly coming in and doing like, I think it's called like a turnabout, like.
Roundabout?
Roundabout.
Yeah.
Around that new area where we got the auto mile. Have you got any updates on that?
Yes, that project.
Just state your first and last name, Nick.
Nick Verret, city engineer. Yes, that project is in the works by DOTD. I can't tell you the exact letting month when the bids will be received, but it's supposed to be in the current state fiscal year. So we're looking forward to having that one under construction. I mean, once the bids are received and so forth, probably under construction within a year or so.
Got you, that's awesome. Just what Ms. Bedder was saying, if you're trying to get out from that side where you got the French market, it could be.
Yeah. And the Highway 504, all of that. The roundabout should help the traffic flow and this improves safety tremendously.
Safety, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other comments, questions, counsel? Again, this is just introduction. We do have Mr. Barr here. He's pretty faithful to our meetings and we'll be maybe coming through that office of Senator Kennedy as well, letting them know what we're trying to do. But good to see you again, Mr. Barr, tonight. All right. Next item on the agenda, again, introduction, is read by Councilman Harrington.
This is ordinance number 22 of 2023, an ordinance authorizing the city of Natchitoches to enact ordinances relative to the assessment of civil penalties for speeding within the city limits. It's quite a lengthy ordinance. I'll probably give the floor to the chief possibly, who's.
Well, actually, I think maybe Nick, and I see Mr. Russell Sarpy as well. Nick, you want to come first?
Nick Verret, city engineer. Basically, this ordinance is kind of the precursor to the implementation of the recommendation that was made by the local task force on traffic calming. Basically, we do know that we have a speeding issue around town. And just to reinforce some statistics that I gave when I made the presentation making the recommendation, there was a six-day speed study on a part of Kaiser Avenue that showed that 25% of the vehicles were exceeding the speed limit that's posted there by at least eight miles an hour and as many as 15 miles an hour over the speed limit. So we know that that's a problem. In the speed zone at Natchitoches Central High School on the Highway 1 bypass, in a one-week period, the number of speeders during the times for the speed limit, the school's speed posting, totaled over 1,600 vehicles for that week. If you divide that by five, that's over 300 vehicles a day that were exceeding the posted speed by more than six miles an hour over the posted speed within the school zone. So we know we have issues here. So the task force has made the recommendation that we try to move forward with the implementation of the portable camera speed enforcement. And we need an ordinance on the books that allows us to assess civil penalties for speeding. So any questions about that? Mr. Sarpy is here, representing the vendor that we've been talking with about the implementation. And of course, Chief Collins can also comment too on the draft ordinance. As far as the nuts and bolts of that, I'll let them comment on that more so. But again, this, the task. But again, this, this, the task force is looking at this not as a money-making operation. The bottom line for us is the improvement of safety. And that's, that's why we've made the recommendation.
So, Mr. Nick, would this be a handheld? This going to be handheld?
It is a handheld device, yes. And it's handheld device that will be by a licensed or a certified operator, law enforcement official, that will be contracted. And the, the person violating the speed limit will receive a mail-out that shows the photograph, showing, marking the time, the speed they were traveling, all those things.
So I was looking at the, the price differences of the, so they would be for chief, right?
Or our attorney, I think, helped, actually drafted the draft ordinance. So.
So we're going to price differences on the, the amount of speed that they are going to do. So they do thirty, and they go and five mile difference. They're going to do like, what, six? Another, because I know it say thirty, then it went thirty-six, and it'd be like two fifty. They don't want to another.
Different for the school zone, they have a posted twenty-five mile per hour range. Maybe driving thirty-one, thirty-five, two thirty, thirty-six parts to get, goes up based on how much you speak.
So why they did the, the, the price differences for, like, instead of keeping it the same, basically, just to, you know, to stop them from speeding, or that's what I understand the price difference for.
I think the range is to determine the speed at some rate. So if you drive at thirty-one, you shouldn't be charged the same amount of tickets on the drive to forty-five in the school zone.
Okay, so basically, it's going to attack the people coming in the school zone, basically. So it'd be school zone. Because I know when I'm driving, basically, what I'm trying to say, when I'm driving forty, I'm normally going forty-five, or a little bit inch over. So basically, so they'll be, and that's be everybody basically getting a ticket then, you know? Everybody be getting a ticket because we all go that extra mile over the speed limit. That's, you know, that's anywhere, you know? We go twenty-five, we go thirty, you know, we go a little bit over. You go fifteen, you go go with twenty.
Okay, but the, the difference between devices, like they're using other places that's in the ground as opposed to handheld, you can actually control when you shoot the ticket.
Okay.
So instead of setting it at six miles per hour in the school zone, you can actually set it at a high rate.
Okay.
So if you're driving five miles per hour, they won't issue you a ticket. It'd be discretion of the department, how they wanted to enforce it.
Okay.
But we would actually be able to control based on the gun.
The handheld.
Yeah, what tickets you actually shoot. So if the mayor want to, say the chief want to make it eight miles per hour over the speed limit, you can set that gun at that. And I'll let Mr. Sarpy speak to that also, but you can't set it, yeah.
Okay. And if I might also follow up too, I shared this when we made our presentation before. The difference in speed from twenty miles an hour to thirty miles an hour almost doubles the, the stopping distance that's required. It also increases by about three times the likelihood of a fatality if a pedestrian is hit. When it goes from twenty to forty miles an hour, it takes about three times as, as far to stop a vehicle. And the likelihood of, of a severe or fatality pedestrian crash increases from thirteen percent to seventy-three percent. So when we think about these tolerances for speed, we understand there needs to be tolerances built in, but I do, you know, it's, it's also important to understand the effect of just those few miles an hour over the speed limit. So again, we're, we're looking for highway safety here to increase safety to our citizens, and that's why we've made the recommendation. What the council does with it from here, that's, you know, that's up to you guys.
Got you. Any other questions for Nick, council?
I just want to say, I know I'm, I'm on this board committee with the.
Task force, yeah.
With this, with the task force. But, and we don't want to see placing a hardship on people with tickets. Again, like you stated, the, the main purpose is safety purpose. That's the purpose of this. So I just want to make that clear. It's not trying to make money off anyone, not trying to place hardship of handing out tickets to someone. And I, you know, I don't think a person should be given a ticket for five miles over the speed limit like the attorney was saying, you know, at our discretion at, at the limit that we were setting at. But I just want to make that statement that we need to look at trying to decrease the speed, especially on Kaiser. And I know I've seen some even on South Drive, driving over the speed limit. So I just want to make that known.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I have questions. When reading, it, it lists that the, I'm sorry, let me go back to it. The, the, the director of this new committee is the chief of police. Is that correct? It says.
Again, I'll defer to Mr. Washington on that.
It says, yeah, okay. And so then it says, there can be, I'm sorry, let me, let me, I'm scrolling down. If you're objecting to your ticket, you can have, you can ask for a hearing for the violation, and there's an order for a hearing officer, et cetera, et cetera. But who, it says there is a, a committee established under the supervision of the director, a bureau is what it says, a bureau established that oversees the hearings. So the hearings will not be in city court?
No, the hearings would be by an attorney that's, I think, it says a certain timeframe that it'd be practicing law. That person would sit as the, basically, a hearing officer, and it won't be held in city court. And the building, we would establish where it would be held, potentially could be here. But we need to establish where we would hold that hearing.
I know Shreveport is having a lot of issues with this right now with, you know, school, people getting tickets in school district and other areas. And so I, I mean, I don't know if we've looked at all the kinks, not trying to cut you off, Mr. Harris, but I don't know if we looked at all the kinks, he's talking about a hearing officer and all of that, as to how we're actually going to do this program. Have we? And I know Mr. Sarpy is here to speak, and hopefully he can enlighten us a little bit more on how it would be done as to people getting these violations and who would they contest it to? How would they go about doing it? Can you speak more on that?
And actually, Ms. Smith, on the, the operations of the violation itself and the due process, that actually comes through the city. His company is the handheld and maybe provide the officer that's certified to be out on the streets to issue the ticket. But the nuts and bolts is run through.
Through the city.
So the, the problem in other places in New Orleans and Baton Rouge early on was a notification problem. They had perceived due process issues. They, in New Orleans, when a suit took place, tickets were issued. They were issued, and the person conducting the administration of it, well, I think, was public works, like a whole different department as opposed to the police department. So we had an opportunity to see New Orleans, Baton Rouge, and number cities, missteps. So at this, this stage, we read, read all those cases.
We don't want to miss steps, is what I'm trying to say, yeah.
Right, right. So people receiving notice to be here, they will have that. And, and an officer or attorney hearing the information, which is provided based on the current case law, the red most case. So they have the opportunity to be heard, and we will issue decision. So everything would be what I believe, consistent with what I read with the case law. But yes, it has been some, some starting stops, including Shreveport. And with Shreveport, the issue with Shreveport was that, and that's something that we consider removing, the fifty dollars to contest your ticket, being a part of an extra cost to the person. So that's what we talked about earlier this week, about removing the fifty dollars from the legislation. Also, we already removed a thirty-dollar fee if the person failed to, to show for the hearing. And since he didn't show for the hearing, other municipalities charge an extra thirty dollars. We, we had that in our legislation, and we discussed removing that from it. So it's no extra burden to the person. They want to challenge it, they're free to come and challenge the ticket without additional costs.
And I think what Edison, where, where would the hearing be held? Is it, will it be here, City Hall, or City Court, or?
It won't be in City Court. My, my thought was to have it here. First, we need to, you know, pass the legislation and decide what's the best location to have the hearing.
And it's just been introduced today, so any other changes that, you know?
I understand. I know y'all have these meetings, and we not aware, I'm not aware of them. You know, you said you had a meeting, and so, I mean, I just wanted to be abreast and know what's going on. I come here and stuff throw it on me at the last minute, but go ahead and tell me what.
Yes, Russell Sarpy, I'm the owner of Emergent Enforcement Solutions. Like City Attorney advised, so what my company does is provide the infrastructure that you don't have, which is the court management, the online ticket payment portal, the software solution that allows for the collection of the citations that can be ingested into the software that runs the automation of the registration to apply to the citations. That's a system that is required for the automation of it. All of the controls, whether you want to reduce a fine, spoil a citation, give the violator a lengthy time to actually pay the citation, or even set the speed thresholds for the specific locations, whether you want to issue a ten-over, twelve-over, fifteen-over, all of that is up to the municipality. So with the chief of police or with whatever you guys decide on, our company just provides that infrastructure in place for you guys to work this program, which is, which is the key component for that. You have all the controls in your hands. One thing I will say to this is that everywhere we've deployed at, we've at least reduced speeding by fifty to seventy percent. In the town of Richwood, even though people complain, people are going to complain whether a police officer issues you a ticket on the side of the road, our system makes it safer for both the law enforcement officer and the person that's driving the vehicle. Most traffic stops are unsafe. Most locations don't provide a shoulder of the road to execute a traffic stop. So a lot of locations go unenforced based on the nature of the roadway. So we've reduced, in the town of Richwood, the year prior to us doing enforcement there, they had twenty-five traffic accidents on that roadway. As of now, with almost a year coming on with our enforcement there, they've had two. And I mean, that is huge. And that's L.A. DOTD's numbers. That's not me coming up with those numbers. Those numbers were delivered to Mayor Brown at the town of Richwood. So it is a public safety solution. And I, I, my personal opinion, in the school zones, I think you do need to enforce that six-over. I think that if you have, and it's not up to me, it's up to you guys, but you have to have, be more zero tolerant in the school zones than you do on the other roadways. I think you can go ten or twelve over in certain locations, but in the school zones, we need to be a little bit more stricter. But that is, again, your decision to make as a governor.
I think this is just a pilot program we're going to be trying, I think, for six months, we said. Thank you.
Actually, we, we said ninety days. We reduced it down to ninety days.
I think that's better, yes, sir.
I wasn't aware of it being reduced, okay.
Well, it's not in the ordinance, but I think it's just a, just a month-to-month agreement anyway. Is that correct?
That, well, that is correct. And I, I just highly recommend that. You, you can't really get a good feel for the system unless you do ninety days, right? It's, you're going to see the violations coming in, you're going to get a feel for the, the community and what their feedback is coming in, and then you'll be able to see some type of reduction within ninety days from the program. And then you can make a decision before we have to put more resources. So I would just suggest we start with two locations, you know, before we do a citywide program. And, and I think within ninety days, you'd be to make a good assessment whether this is for the city of Nakadish or not.
Okay. Thank you for letting me know it's ninety days now instead of six months.
Yes, ma'am.
My, my, my concern is, is the, the process, the hearing process is, like it states on there in section twenty-one eighty-four, the city of Nakadish saw the burden of proving the violation and that the person was in violation of a law, by the partners of the evidence. I mean, that's, we have city court for that already. I don't, I don't understand why we needing to create another committee, a bureau with a hearing officer, and is that, what's that going to cost the city? I'm unsure about that process. And why not, why don't we just use what's already in place, the, the city court?
Well, I would say, from, from the litigation that I've read, city court tend to deal with actions that's criminal in nature. They do handle, you know, civil lawsuits, but for ticket purposes, it's generally, you know, criminal in nature. This authority is through, you know, municipality, appointing a hearing officer as opposed to imposing that extra duty on the city court judge plays a certain role. We anticipate the revenue being generated from the tickets, be able to successfully pay for the hearing officer, and try to have these tickets, you know, whatever timeframe, every sixty, ninety days. So it shouldn't burden financially impact the city.
What about an appeal process? I didn't see an appeal process listed in here.
Yes. And, and as I was reading it, I didn't find in the legislation in other location, there was an appeals process to the district courts. This is, again, on for introduction, and I did take that in consideration of maybe creating a process for an appeal, but I need to see it and, and see that authority first, yes.
That's, that's just my, my whole issue, because I've seen them before, like you, you say, like in New Orleans and other places, and there's a, I don't know, I just, I have issues with it. And Sixth Amendment potential issues of your representation and lack of, you know, the city court, it's there, and if you don't, if you don't have representation, you can get a public defender in, in small claims court, you know, and even, even there. And this, I don't see that confronting your, your accuser. I don't know, I don't know how that plays with the, I don't know. It's all kind of iffy to me.
Civil versus criminal, little different. A person's liberty at that state, as a result, your liberty being at state, the court is required to appoint your counsel to make sure your liberty, but this is financial and civil in nature.
But then it sounds like it might have crim, because it's a violation of a law. I, I don't know, it's.
Again, I think it, it's just been introduced today. So I think there's an opportunity.
Two lawyers.
We can nerd out.
I think there's an opportunity to make some, make some changes as we may need it. But again, we do acknowledge an issue with speeding in, in the city and trying, I think everybody's got to acknowledge that. On Saturday night, I witnessed a wreck. Scientifically, I don't know, was it related to speeding, but I, first time actually seeing one on Kaiser Avenue, so. But thank you, Mr. Sarpy.
Probably by Melrose and.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Sarpy.
And there should be some other comment from the council.
All right. Last item to be introduced tonight is read by Councilman P.T.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number zero-two-three of two thousand and twenty-three, and ordinance amended ordinance number fifty-nine of two thousand and eleven of the city of Nagus, Louisiana, to repeal the descriptions and destinations of existing city of Nagus city council districts. Establish new city of Nagus city council districts. Describe the boundaries of each new district and otherwise provide for an effective date of the ordinance. This is for introduction.
There was a, one map that was introduced, I think, on the twenty-seventh of February, some comment from the council, and I think Mr. Floyd has either talked to or met with everybody since then. So this is a slightly different map. So I wasn't necessarily in all of the meetings that you all had with Mr. Floyd, so, and he's not here tonight. I think he will be here at the next meeting, so. But I don't know, any comments? And certainly, I know, you know, if you have any questions, you have his email, and I think his phone number as well, so. All right. I think he, again, I think he'll be at the next meeting. Okay. All righty. Moving on to some resolutions, we've got a few to deal with. And the first one is resolution number twenty-two of two thousand and twenty-three. Councilwoman Washington, Eli.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number twenty-two, the resolution of two thousand and twenty-three correction, approving and accepting the contract for exemption for the Avbore tax taxes events notification twenty eighteen zero five zero three for lines compressor LAC and authorize the mirror of the seat of negative Ronnie Williams Jr. to draw the execute letter of any other instrument necessary to convey the exception of approval of the seat of negative to the. to convey the exception of approval of the City of Natchitoches to the extension. Extension, got these wires, correction, got these wires in my teeth. And I move to adopt resolution zero-zero-two of two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made in second, and Miss Stacy, I know someone reached out to you. This goes with the last ITAP, it's just a part, really a part of that process, nothing different, is that correct?
Yeah, it's an additional project that was, it was an oversight in the email exchange.
Okay.
Didn't get on the last agenda.
Got you.
So it's just a, it's another project.
Just another project associated. We talked about a couple of weeks ago, the benefit that Alliance has for the city, the payroll that they have currently. This is a forty million dollar project that's gonna create nearly eighty jobs between forty and fifty thousand a year. So, like I said, Mr. Brock was here the last time, and I think they they sent over, some state office sent this one over later, so it's before you today. So I don't know if that's comments or questions, but again, that impact that Mr. Brock talked about is tied to this as well, so. Any comments or questions, council, about it? All right, and I I think the way we look at these is certainly the city does better with the deal in terms of what we get as opposed to what you may say the exemption that's allowed or given, okay? Public comments or questions here?
Hi, my name is Precious Barber. I want to ask this question, and it can go with this resolution. When we're doing things of these natures and we allowing, I understand that it does benefit the city. However, do we have anything in place when we allowing companies like this? Do we have anything in place for the city to make sure that employees are getting equality within these companies before we just say, well, I'm gonna say, yes, we're gonna do this because it's gonna benefit the city, but I'm also getting complaints from a lot of these workers. And these workers are telling me that they're getting treated like slaves, and the turnover rate at Alliance is horrible. And so my question to you is, before we accepting these bids or before we accepting these companies, because we know they're gonna bring forty million dollars, are there any penalties that are set in place when people are not being treated well within these companies? Or just, we just saying, well, we gonna get this money, and we're not gonna question anything? Because even during COVID, I had so many employees contacting me from Alliance Compressors saying, Precious, we have COVID here, no one is telling us, and they're trying to hide these things. So before we accept deals like this, do we have anything in place to make sure that our employees are being treated properly? Because I'm tired of businesses coming into our cities, and then our people, our citizens are not treated well, like, for instance, Arby's, like Arby's, that y'all approved to come here, and citizens on Facebook fighting to get their wages. So I'm just wondering, what do you do when we have these type of issues?
Well, I think the federal government, well, I know there are, there are already some things in place federally speaking, maybe Fair Labor Standards Act, maybe one that we could cite. So you already have federal agencies, things in place that people could, you know, contest and and report. Like, if you say what's going on at at certain places, that there doesn't wait for those to be reported. And that's an agency already set up.
So once the city just accept these companies and these business in, is nothing else that can be done within the city to make sure any things happen properly with the employees?
I think that's something already in place, is what I'm saying.
I'm talking about within our local government.
Nothing we can do.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We're part of the federal, you know what I'm saying?
They have to reach out.
Okay, any other public comment or question? Okay, CNN, Mrs. Stacy?
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries.
Boycott.
Next item on the agenda is read by Councilwoman Elroy Smith.
What is this, twenty-three?
Uh, yes, ma'am, twenty-three.
Okay, resolution number zero-twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-three is a resolution approving and acknowledging the second payment to city personnel under that appropriation of funds authorized by ordinance twenty-five of two thousand and twenty-two for personnel and to otherwise provide respect there too. Whereas ordinance number twenty-five of two thousand and twenty-two authorized two payments for city personnel defined as essential workers under the Act and as designated by the mayor or the finance director, the city of Natchitoches. And whereas the second payment is included in the current year budget and has been authorized by the city council of the city of Natchitoches, and whereas the workers in the critical infrastructure sectors employed within the city as determined by the mayor of the city as chief executive are the proper recipients of the essential worker compensation. And whereas this payment will be for personnel employed as of February first, two thousand and twenty-three. And whereas further, the city council of the city of Natchitoches has reviewed ordinance number twenty-five and desires to approve, acknowledge, and authorize the second payment to essential workers described in ordinance number twenty-five. Be it therefore resolved by the city council of the city of Natchitoches, that the city council expresses its desire to make the second payment to essential workers contemplated in ordinance number twenty-five of two thousand and twenty-three. Now be it therefore resolved by the city of Natchitoches that the mayor Ronnie Williams Jr. is hereby authorized and directed to do all things necessary and proper connection here with to effectuate the second payment to the essential workers as contemplated by ordinance number twenty-five of two thousand and twenty-three. And move for adoption of this resolution.
I think it.
Motion made in second, Clarissa, any comment as to why we're saying this now?
Yeah, so initially, the first, the first ordinance was for the first payment. It was noted in that first ordinance that there would be two payments, but it was noted that it was authorizing the first payment. So when we reviewed it, we thought that it was necessary to come back before the council to let them know that we are looking to authorize a second payment. This is for any employee that was hired February first, two thousand and twenty-three and before would qualify for this second payment. And this is funded through our ARPA. This was something that was decided by the council, I'm guessing, a year or so ago, when we were awarded those ARPA funds to award our essential workers for working through through that, through that time, so this is just.
And what was that amount, I think, was it five or?
Well, it, no, ma'am, it's it's a, it's a scale. Yes, ma'am, it's a scale based on our first responders were given a certain amount of fifteen hundred. Those are non-first responders were given a thousand, and then that was broken down part-time. If you were part-time, then you got half of that amount.
Okay, yes, good.
Any other comments or questions, council? Any public comments or questions here?
So they're gonna be getting a second payment.
Right, well.
And what? When, 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 when will it start?
We'll actually do, it's a one-time payment, and we'll actually do that on the payroll of the week of April fifteenth, but I think that it falls a little bit later than that.
Okay.
But it's the week, a week of April fifteenth.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, council? All righty, I don't think there was any public comment or question. Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is resolution number twenty-four of two thousand and twenty-three. It's Councilwoman Washington Eli.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number zero-two-four, two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the mayor to advertise and accept the bid for the purchase of a digger, derrick truck for the city of Natchez Utility Department, bid number zero-six-five-nine. The truck must be available for delivery by July the first of two thousand and twenty-three. The company submitting the bid must be agreeable to financing the truck for a term of sixty months. The city in Natchitoches will place a hundred thousand dollars down payment and remain anew that is the bid price less than, less a hundred thousand down payment will be financed for sixty months. You will require to submit the details of the amount of finance that will be including plenty state interest rate and monthly payment for the sixty months. There will be a balloon payment due at the end of the term. The owner after sixty months will be zero, and with fully payments made by the title will be transferred and placed into the.
Is it, is it, which one did you read?
I don't have it, though.
No.
Last page.
Do you?
Yeah, the digger.
Okay, it's on there?
Yeah. I don't have that.
It's O-two-four.
Oh, this is O-two-four?
Oh, that's not.
What you got, the O-two, that's the digger? The title you read was.
The bid information.
I believe what she's reading is correct.
We don't have it.
Okay.
No, it's somewhere. The only problem I saw that, there is no balloon payment at the end.
Okay, all right.
What you're reading is not in the work.
Right.
All the resolutions.
Okay, all right, so it's in mine. But I'd like to move to adopt resolution numbers zero-two-four of two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
All right, motion's been made in second. Matt, this is your department, any other comment here?
This is for a big digger truck that we found, one is available, that is available. We, for the last five years, we leased one, and we lost it. The lease expired probably six months ago, so we've been without a big digger truck for six months. We found this one was available to buy now. So we have one, if you remember, we have one ordered that's gonna come in in the next couple of months. It's been ordered for two years. That's a smaller digger truck, so we usually keep a small digger truck and a big digger truck. Reason being, the big, big trucks are much more expensive, and we, we don't need the big one all the time. That's for setting the much larger poles. So we decided this one was available, we need to jump on it.
Okay, comments or questions, council, for Matt? Public comments or questions? CNN, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Next item is resolution number twenty-five of two thousand and twenty-three, and it's read by Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number twenty-five of two thousand and twenty-three is a resolution authorizing preparation and submittal of an application to the Louisiana Department of Health, LDH, Office of Public Health, OPH, Agency for the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, DWSRF Lead Service Line Replacement Grant, whereas the city of Natchitoches is eligible to receive funding from the United States Environmental Protection Agency for Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Lead Service Line Replacement Grant. And whereas funding is available to complete service line replacement, which is eligible, eligible, DWSRF expense with said funding being provided from the bipartisan infrastructure law, which has invested three billion dollars towards lead service line replacement. And whereas the mayor and the city council of the city of Natchitoches deem it best interest of the city of Natchitoches and its citizens to seek and apply for the grants, and now therefore be it resolved that the mayor, chief council of Natchitoches authorize and direct EGES to make proper application to Louisiana Department of Health, LDH, Office of Public Health, OPH, Agency for Lead Service Line Replacement Funding. And I move to adopt resolution number twenty-five of two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
All right, motion made in second. I don't know, is this an example of a homophone where two words are spelled the same? But, so I know you kept on saying lead service line, lead service line.
Land.
Yeah, we're trying to deal with lead. But but there is a case when you could say lead, all right, but this is for the, for the lead. So I I think we've seen, you know, this is, it says to EPA, but it's a, it's a benefit, one of the benefits of the infrastructure bill that passed in two thousand and twenty-one that allows us to basically take stock of any lead lines that we may have. Hopefully none, but if we have them, we can identify grant funds to replace them, I think is pretty much what it is.
That's correct. The EPA is requiring every water system in the United States to do this.
Okay, right, so we've been successful with some grant funding lately, and hopefully this can be another way in which we're successful. We get funding to investigate if we have them, that's what this is about?
Yes, we have to investigate to see if or how many we have by doing a random sampling of neighborhoods. And it was not only looking at the service line from the city connection to the meter, it's also looking at the connection from the meter to the homeowner's house.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's, it's a pretty big undertaking. So what you have to do first is develop a program to do your identification and your sampling. Once that is complete, then you can apply for funds to actually do the replacement. So this, this identification has to be done by, I believe it's November of two thousand and twenty-four. October, thank you, October of two thousand and twenty-four. And then once that is complete, then you can turn around and apply for funds for the actual replacing of of any that you have.
You know how lead comes about, is it just through underground?
Years and years ago, they used to make pipes out of lead. That was a standard practice.
Crazy.
And they didn't know the dangers of lead poisoning by pipes.
Yeah, okay, all right, council, any other comments or questions here? Any public comments or questions, Ms. Wayne?
My name is Wayne Hall. These lead pipes, is that the galvanized pipes?
Well, you know, some galvanized pipes do have a certain amount of lead in them. I mean, that's why they don't use them anymore for, for water lines. But no, they, these are actual pipes made from lead, and the most, you usually saw them not on the main lines of water lines, the trunk lines, you usually saw them on the service lines. So they had what they call a goosenecks. It's a flex, more flexible line that went from the main to the meter, and they were common many, many years ago.
All right, so so all of the galvanized pipes around aren't what you're looking for to replace?
No, not at this time, but we do have to identify the galvanized lines also.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other public comments or questions? Okay, CNN, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next item is resolution number twenty-six of two thousand and twenty-three, Councilman PT.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number zero-two-six of two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for building and site work improvements. Public Works Building sixteen oh eight, Texas Street, in Natchitoches, Louisiana, bid number zero-six-sixty. And I also move that resolution number zero-two-six be adopted.
Second.
Motion made in second to adopt this, we met with Mr. Norman Anasif, Norman's in the back, and he's got his engineering work done. Now it's just time to to go out for bids, see what the bids are gonna say in terms of, based on the work that needs to be done, what, what does that cost? So just seeking permission to go out for bids. Comments or questions, council?
Ready to see public works move.
Are any public comments or questions? Okay, CNN, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT? Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next item is resolution number twenty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three, Councilman Harrington.
Resolution twenty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three is a resolution authorizing the mayor to advertise and accept bids consisting of runway seventeen through thirty-five, taxiways, and apron rehabilitation, Airport Improvement Program Number three dash thirty-two dash zero-zero-three-four dash zero-three-zero dash twenty-twenty-three. I move to adopt resolution twenty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made in second, Ed, you got. Motion made in second. Ed, you got some comment that's helpful here?
Yeah, this is a seal coat project. We'll do some crack sealing first, and then do the seal coat over the main runway, the taxiways, the aprons. And this is to extend the life of what you already have. We won't be milling up any asphalt or anything like that. Like, you know, you commonly see like on a street replacement, but this is just an oil-based material they put on to rejuvenate the asphalt, to extend the life of it. And then it will, all the stripes on the runways and taxiways will be put new, you know, new stripes. And this is, they anticipate the construction to be about 125,000, 1.25 million dollars. And then with the engineering and the study and all that, we're looking between 1.4, 1.5 million dollars. But this is 100% paid by the FAA and LA DOTD. It will not cost the city any money for this project.
That's great.
Comments or questions, counsel? I heard that that's great. I agree.
I just say, Matt, we do, we do an awesome job finding free money for the airport.
The federal government's going to spend it somewhere, so might as well spend it here.
Yeah, that's right. We need to get our share of it.
Right. Okay. Any public comment or question here? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Precious Barber. Awesome. We don't have to pay anything with the city. But every time I come to these meetings, year after year, I always hear things about the airport. Maybe I'm too poor, because I ain't never been over there and had to catch no plane over there, nor do I know anyone who's ever had to. So my question is, how much revenue does that airport brings to the City of Nagades? Because I haven't seen them do anything, and like I say, once again, maybe I'm too poor, I don't know. I haven't even seen them do anything for the community. So I'm trying to figure out how much revenue are they actually bringing to the city? I, I, I don't know.
What, the rep?
Do they bring revenue to the city?
Explain how the airport is used.
Yeah, explain.
Yeah, well, first of all, the airport's a big economic development. So you saw Alliance Compressors on the monitor a while ago, all the large manufacturing international paper warehouse or Alliance Compressors, the hospital, that's where they use their emergency, the helicopter that you see that lands on the hospital and transports patients, it's based there, the crop dusters, all the ag operations for farmers, all that's based there. So it's a large economic development, too. But yes, the airport does generate money. We have hanger leases, and we have fuel cells, and land leases. That's our primary income at the airport is from leasing and fuel cells.
So do you know about what range, how much money we bring?
I don't have any exact dollar amount for you right now. I could look up the land leases and the hanger leases. That, that's a fixed number that I, I can look up for you. But the fuel cells depends on how much activities at the airport. But it's a, it's a, it's a good amount, a few hundred thousand dollars just on the fuel cells. But I, I would have to look and see.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Any other public comments or questions? CNN, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
Motion carries as well. Next item on the agenda is financial report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Clarissa Brown Smith?
Yes, sir. So I'll go through this very quickly. Just wanted to report on the sales tax revenue up through February. So for the month of February, we exceeded our last year same time by 5.62%. So we brought in 1.1 million, $68,000 in sales tax. When we're looking at the overall fiscal year, which runs from June to June, I'm sorry, June to May, we are above 2.2%. We've brought in a total of $10 million, $59,000, same time last year. We're at 200, I'm sorry, we brought above that at $218,000. So sales tax is generating upwards, which is really, really good. So again, overall, same time this year collectively, we're above last year by 2.22%. When we're looking at our TIFs, we did see a slight decline in our TIF taxes, but based on a three-year trend, we've always seen a dip in February. Of course, this is outside, right outside of our holiday season, so you tend to see a small dip during our February months, but still trending in a positive way when we look at January and March and all of our, I'm sorry, January and February in all of our TIF districts. So sales tax are doing great. We do anticipate, continue to see a uptick in sales tax. We still have oil companies that are still in town. We still have construction that is happening, so that brings about hotel stays and people spending money in the city. So we do tend to look at it from that perspective and, and in regards to if it's going to be an upward trend or a downward trend. So we know that there are still some big projects that are going on in the city, around the city, that's going to bring in some additional sales tax dollars. So we're doing pretty good at this point. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Clarissa Brown Smith. If there is a question, I think everybody knows how to reach her, okay? All right. Only other thing we have, we always encourage people, download the Go Nagades app, and also for emergencies. Again, I'm thankful that we haven't had to use it much, but we do put up things, road closures and street closures and things like that on the Regroup app. All right, is there another one? Okay, so just got the next two flyers to kind of save the date for Juneteenth. Juneteenth this year is going to be all in one day, June 17. The early morning part is going to be the basketball tournament that we did last year. Hopefully, we get some of the department heads and some of the councils to participate in that. But we're also this year looking for vendors to do a pop-up shop. It will be on the riverbank, set up as early as noon, you see there, and has information at the bottom, so we got that. Steve got it to Facebook today, and I shared it, just hopefully other people will share it as well to know that that's coming. All right. So again, to do a pop-up shop, that will be something different than we, than happened last year, to give up people an opportunity to sell the products that they make. So I think that'll be great. And then the next flyer is just again, save the date, the basketball tournament starting at 9:00 AM. Hopefully, we can get Eddie, one of the people, to come out there and shoot some hoops with us. I know PT, he used to do it back in the day, he doesn't mind doing that. And then we got the pop-up shop starting at 2:00, and then the Freedom Festival, if you will, starting at 7:00 PM. And we're really trying to land a well-known artist. We had really local talent last year. Maybe want to start with some local talent this year, but then get a well-known artist. And so we're working on that. We've already reached out to somebody, but it's about getting the money together to, to get them, sponsorship dollars. So certainly appreciate all of our sponsors last year, and hoping that people will commit again, and more people commit this year to it. Okay? All right. So again, save the date, June 17. All righty. At this time, counsel, here, motion to adjourn?
I'm motioning to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all in favor?
All right.
All right, meeting adjourned. Have a nice day, everybody.